So good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. We see a few people in the audience, and I'm sure we've got a few folks on Zoom. I would like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order. There will be a special Board of Education meeting on Wednesday, July 9th at 11:30 a.m. in the Board of Education meeting room. So again, thank you all for joining us this evening.
It's the 19th.
The 19th, July 19th. That's what I said, at 11:30.
He said 9th.
9th. All right. Thanks for the correction of the date. July 19th will be the next Special Board of Education meeting on Wednesday. Thank you. Good. 11:30 in the morning. Thank you for those of you joining us in person, and again, those of you on Zoom. It's hard to believe graduation is already behind us, and summer has begun. I know summer school has begun, ESY has begun. So as always, a district in motion and things continuing to move. We had a great series of interviews early this evening with people joining our district, with people moving up through our district. So really exciting times and a lot of hard work done by the administration. I will honestly say that I know from a board perspective and from an administration perspective, you know, the district really never sleeps. It's like, you know, a play on New York City, but the district truly never sleeps, and there's always a lot going on. So I know he's not here this evening, but I'd like to take a moment. He's actually at a conference, so he's always working, but this would have been Chris Tranberg's last meeting, but I want to thank Chris. Join the district. Alan brought him on board. Alan had worked with him previously, and he hit the ground running in our district. So I want to thank him for the time and energy that he put into the district during challenging times. And again, we were a district that was recognized for all that we did during COVID, and Chris was a big part of that, along with working on the strategic plan and DEI. So thank you for Chris Tranberg and wishing him well. It's always exciting when someone takes the next phase of their career. So Chris is going up to Branford to be the superintendent up there. So congratulations to him. It's hard to imagine that graduation is behind us. I want to thank, again, all the graduates. Phenomenal job. All those that stepped up from elementary school to middlesex, from middlesex to the high school, and our high school graduates. I've never been so thankful in my life to hear rain and thunder while we were inside. So we walked into sunshine, poured rain and thunder, an incredible concert by student musicians of Free Bird. Energy in the auditorium like I've never seen. All the compliments have been. It's one of the best graduations that people have participated in, and that's a graduation where only two people are allowed to show, and everyone else is overflow or sitting in their living room watching it on Channel 79, I believe. Thank you, Jim, or DAF. Yeah, thank you both. And then the best part of it is, as our students left, it stopped raining and there was a rainbow. So if that is a signal and a thank you to a job well done to our graduates, to our staff and our administration. So they're on their way. I hope everyone does get some downtime and enjoy some family time this summer. So thank you all. With that, Michelle, I will turn it over to public comment.
Good evening. If anyone in person would like to participate, please wait for the chairman to acknowledge you. You'll have just three minutes to comment. Please state your name and address for the record. Anyone in person?
Anyone in person for public comment? All right. Thank you. Anyone on Zoom, Michelle?
Anyone on Zoom would like to participate, please use the raised hand icon. There are no raised hands.
Okay, we'll have public comment at the end. Thank you. We'll move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Adley.
Good evening, everybody, and a special welcome to family members and guests who are with us today and staff members. I'll just be brief about the graduation. Mr. Chairman has said it all. It was tremendously pulled off, and it's wonderful to see the kids just celebrate the special moment. So I thank you to everyone and to the community members who made that possible, to the staff members who made that possible, administration at the high school. So we're up and running also with Darien Summer School and ESY, and we're fully, two days into it. Yesterday, for the first day, as you can imagine, I'll have to say, went rather smoothly by all accounts, and today, when I was up there, it was very smooth. And kids had settled into the programming, and Marcus did a great job up there, and it's well underway. And so it's nice also to see our security in place and so on and so forth around that. So we have basically approximate numbers around 1,100 in summer school, and ESY is about 74 for pre-K, and through grade 12 is about 369. So they're comparable numbers. So we're doing everything from art to basketball, mathematics, and everything in between. So it's just wonderful to see the number of enrichment opportunities that are taking place. I also want to just thank the administrators, teachers, the related service providers, our parent professionals, central services staff in particular, I may say, Dani Parr for transportation coordinator, for her efforts to get things up and running. So if there's things that are not quite smooth, they'll be smoothed out pretty quickly. So thank you for them. The administrative retreat took place last week on Monday and Tuesday. That was at the Furfield Museum. DPT training was provided to all administrators, and Dr. Dad helped us along doing that. And so that was a wonderful opportunity for all administrators to reflectively get caught up on DPT training, school safety. That was incident command training. We had state representatives come from Department of Management Services and School Security and led us through the incident command training. We also looked at anonymous alerts, which is an app potentially rolling out in the fall, an app that's just for self-reporting. I'm sure we've got more about that with the board. We also did a vision of the graduate, sort of planning for next year, which is really one of our big priorities. You've been around the track. You see that all the stuff is sort of like the top part of the track is completely cleared. The mill work, I believe, has also been just completed, and the north zone sort of is ready. So it'll be ready for football practice. That's what I've told, weather permitting and so on. Let's get a bit of sunshine out here tonight, but it has been helpful to keep the dust down a bit for now. So it's amazing how quickly they can get to work. The oil tank was successfully removed on site at the background circle where the tennis courts are, and we're under budget. It's just over 200,000. We had budgeted 350,000 in the capital budget, and just approximately, just to complete the paving and tidy it up again, it's probably two weeks. Just the final touches go to that. Dr. Fedigan starts April 1st, sorry, April, June, July even, July 1st. Sorry about that.
Going backwards.
But technically, July 3rd will be your first day. She will be in tomorrow, but her first day will be July 3rd. The Oxford Playground was removed, and it is sitting unhindly, ready to be reassembled. HHR, I don't know if Vice Chair will give us the update later, but bids are due another week or so, and moving companies, facilities have been spending the time relocating staff and departments and classrooms for the work that will physically start in August. So we're looking forward to that. Curriculum updates. We do have teachers along with department chairs who are doing curriculum revisions to the Educational 21 platform that will serve as professional development in the summer, or sorry, in the fall. And upcoming dates, we do have the tentative potentially, so we can maybe talk about that, Mr. Brown, the 13th potentially for Policy Committee at 5:30. Not that that's yet to be confirmed. The 19th, as the board chair said, at 11:30, and then the August 8th special meeting. And I thought I'll also wish all of our families a happy and safe summer.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Adley. John has graduated, and hopefully he's enjoying his summer, and I think Swaha might be taking a meeting or two off this summer.
Yeah, but she wants you. She wrote specifically and asked me, could I convey to the board that she would have been here, only she is. She's taken a two-week pre-college course at Yale.
Great. Good for her.
And she was kind enough to send me that note and that one specifically.
Excellent. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting held on Monday, June 12, 2023? Julie, second by Jill. All those in favor, everyone present. Thank you. We'll move on to any board committee reports. Julie.
Thank you. The Communications Committee met Friday, June 23rd. Talked about preparing for our focus groups in the fall, talked about some thoughts for a board goal for next year, and our next meeting is to be scheduled toward the end of the summer, I think, is what we're looking at, to get ready again for the focus groups. Thank you.
Thank you. John?
Finance met the day before. I think that was June 22nd. We have two transfers that we recommended for approval this evening, and also talked about just the memo that was created related to participation fees, and without getting into the policy discussion, but more so just fact-finding around some of the figures that were offered.
Good. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, go ahead.
Alan touched on it, but HHR is on schedule at the moment. We are, as I said, looking for bids. The district is busy doing their portion of preparing the campuses, and so we are expecting to put shovels in the ground mid-August. But again, bids are coming in now, and will be coming in, or they really do, in the next weeks. Thank you.
We did have our last Oxbridge Building Committee meeting, not the last meeting, but the last meeting we had at Oxbridge. So it was exciting to be there in a great conference room at Oxbridge. The only real challenge that they've come up with, and I think it's moving as quickly as it can, is just the, they had to change vendors on the wood floor for the gymnasium. So that was done. They found a new provider. That wood has to come, and it's got to acclimate to temperatures. So while that does cause a little bit of a delay, it looks like everything will still be on schedule for school opening. Parking and reworking the parking lot will be kind of, as always, up to the last minute, but I think there's a good plan in place, and that school should be ready for the opening of school with the full school open, Phase 1 and Phase 2 done. And the good news is we are still way under budget. So that'll be exciting when we bring that school in. So keep you posted on that. Any other board committee reports? All right, good. We will move on to presentations and discussions, but first, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda, to have a, to move back into executive session at the end of the meeting for the purpose of discussing upcoming contract negotiations pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 1206B. So can I have a motion to add that to the end of the meeting, to move into executive session? Dennis, second by Jill. So thank you. All those in favor, thank you. All those present. Thank you, Sarah. With that, we will move on to possible actions on administrative appointments. Dr. Adley, Director of Guidance, 6 through 12, Special Education Department Chair, 9 through 12, Elementary Assistant Principals, Royal Elementary School and Tokeneke Elementary School. So I will turn it over to you briefly, Dr. Adley.
Yes, I want to thank the board for participating in the interview process, and thank Marge and all the staff members, parents, community members who participated in this interview process also. And also, words of congratulations as we consider motions this evening to make the appointments. Our candidates are sitting before us this evening. They've been put through a very rigorous process, and there's light at the end of tunnel. And hopefully your motions go forward this evening, and we welcome you here as part of our Blue Wave family. But congratulations again, and thank you, and to those members of the family who are here. So congratulations to the families.
Great. So I'll make the motion for each of you individually, and once it's accepted, if you want to take a quick minute and come up and make any comments to the podium, please do so. But thank you. I want to say, I want to thank the administration and thank you for going through that rigorous process. I know it's a tough time of year. School's ending. It's always nice to get a little vacation time. I was excited by the interviews. I was excited by the energy, by the fact that some people have been with us, and they're moving up and moving on through the school system. There's some folks that are joining us from outside of the district. We continue to be a district that attracts great talent. So it's exciting to see all you sitting here in front of us, and it was really a pleasurable experience interviewing you all. Great energy, and I feel you'll just continue to add to the value of the education that we deliver to our students. So thank you very much. So with that, we will move on. May I have a motion to appoint Catherine Ostar, Director of Guidance, 6 through 12, John Seeny, second by Dennis. All those in favor. That is Julie, John, Dennis, Jill, David, and Sarah. Any abstentions? And Katie, any abstentions? Dave. All right. So Catherine, congratulations.
Catherine's in California.
Catherine's in California. Sorry. I'm looking over there, seeing all those people. So all right, good. Thank you, Catherine.
Everyone else is here.
Great. May I have a motion to appoint Daniel Cummings, Special Education Assistant Principal for Tokeneke. Julie Best, second by Dennis. All those in favor. That is Best, Seeny, Maroney, McCammon, Danine, Parent. Any abstentions? And Lublin. And any abstentions? Brown. Thank you. Daniel, congratulations.
Thank you so much. I'm eager to get started here in Darien and look forward to all of our work together.
Great. Thank you. May I have a motion to appoint Samantha Swift, Assistant Principal for Tokeneke School. Julie, seconded by Dennis. All those in favor. Best, Seeny, Maroney, McCammon, Danine, Parent, Lublin. Any abstentions? Mr. Brown. All right. Thank you. Samantha, congratulations.
Thank you to the board for the opportunity, and thank you to Tokeneke parents and students and staff for being so welcoming and supportive this past year. I look forward to continue working with the Tokeneke community and for a district who has given me so much over the years. So thank you.
No, thank you very much. May I have a motion to appoint Katie Risk, Assistant Principal for Royal School. Julie Best, second by John Seeny. All those in favor. Best, Seeny, Maroney, McCammon, Danine, and Parent. Any abstentions? And Lublin. Katie, I don't know whether to look up or down. Thank you. Any abstentions? Mr. Brown. Thank you. Katie, congratulations.
Thank you, everyone, for your support. It's been an honor to work in the district, and I look forward to supporting all of our royal families for years to come.
Thank you very much. Last but not least, may I have a motion to appoint Janine Newell, Darien High School Special Education Department Chair. Julie, second by Jill. All those in favor. That is Best, Seeny, Maroney, McCammon, Lublin, Danine, and Parent. Any abstentions? Mr. Brown. Congratulations, Janine.
Thank you so much for the opportunity. I'm very excited to become part of the community here and just get to know everybody. Thank you.
And I'll meet you in the Bronx tomorrow for a couple of talks. Great. Thank you all. Thank you all for joining us. Thank you for family members and other staff members that have joined us here this evening. So thank you very much. Congratulations. Get a little rest this summer, but I know you're eager and all ready to go. So we're excited about that. So thank you very much.
This is your act.
Take your chance.
Leave while the leaving's good, while the light's still on.
Do we want to move the table back or leave it here? Sorry.
Is it?
It's fine.
I think it's fine.
Yeah.
I think it's fine.
Especially if Alicia can sit there.
Yeah. The chair blocks Lori Olson, so I don't have to look at her. We can move the chair. Pops of champagne.
Katie, how many folks, I mean, Michelle, how many folks do we have on Zoom?
10.
Oh, good. Okay. All right. We will move on. Again, that's exciting. Thank you. Dr. Adley, administration for all the hard work on that. We will move on to an update on the Wellness Center and Teen Talk update. Dr. Alicia Dad, welcome. Good to see you this evening.
You want to sit?
Yeah, you want to sit? That'd be nice.
That's why we left the chair there.
I'm not going to do any more introductions to Alicia, but she's hit the platform running. Her expertise and her disposition have just been phenomenal, and just so much needed and well-received. And again, I'd thank the board and the members of the community for support in this position. I think if you just tap the shoulder of any staff member and asked, they would tell you how valuable thus far it has been. But with that, I'll leave for the Dr. Dad.
Great.
Kind words. I have to say, this year has come to a rapid and able to reflect the past, the past year, the doc, we've had that. And just such gratitude. I feel the same bigger excitement as day one, and even more so. I think the retreat was very inspiring vision of the graduate. I'm glad to be here. So tonight, I'm going to focus on two recommendations that, as I came in in March, much of the legwork had been started on these. So I took into consideration some of the work that Dr. Scott McCarthy, Ellen Dunn had done, Denise Quailey, a bunch of individuals, and I kind of looked it through a new lens. So for today, I'm going to focus on the Wellness Center and Teen Talk recommendations. So just a brief overview of the Wellness Center. Currently, it's open for two hours during the day, primarily during lunch hours, and it's staffed by support staffs, such as mental health staff, psychologists, social workers, speech and language pathologists as part of their duties. It provides a wide range of activities. I've been able to spend some time there and seen anything. I think last time I mentioned there's some Uno. Apparently, friendship bracelets have a major resurgence right now. I've seen many friendship bracelets made, and just conversation and connection, which has been really wonderful to see. I've been able to sample times that are kind of more common throughout the school day, but also times when it's been a more vulnerable time for students, including prior to exams, or on anniversaries of tragedies, or during Well-Being Week. So I've had a nice sample of time in there with the students and the staff. So as I had mentioned last time I was here, kind of the framework for which I am thinking about implementation and assessing needs. Right now, I'm in that 99-day, so between 60 and 90 days, I've really focused on assessing and implementing. I've passed 90 days, and I'm not done yet. So I'm going to stick around for a little bit. I'm going to focus a little bit more on my interactions with students and staff. More of my assessments for families has been through informal conversations with parents at various events, parent meetings, things like that. So in terms of the process for coming to a decision regarding whether or not there should be a full-time Wellness Center coordinator, I really first started by establishing relationships with both staff and students. As I mentioned, I spent some time in the Wellness Center. I saw teachers bringing students down after stressful exams, just provide an opportunity for them to decompress and connect. I've also seen some offerings during Well-Being Week. One of the things that I really enjoyed was seeing the interface of community providers, such as from Causeway Collaborative. There was a therapist there talking about kind of finding balance during Well-Being Week. There was also a yoga instructor who talked about the impact of exercise on mental health and well-being. So the opportunity to use the Wellness Center to expose students to an array of different activities to promote their own positive mental health has been really effective. I also had some student conversations. So I had an opportunity to sit down with a couple focus groups and really get a sense of what it's like to be a student at Darien and how the Wellness Center might be of benefit. One of the things I heard is, there's not a lot of kind of hangout space for students when they're not engaged in structured activity, to find a space to spend time together and engage in some activity. They found the Wellness Center to be a place where that could happen. Also, post-COVID, there's this urge to kind of isolate a little bit more and engage less with other students, whereas having activities available to them, such as creating a friendship bracelet or playing a game, provide an opportunity for them to congregate around a common goal or activity. In terms of the informal student survey, I'm going to give you a little preview in the next slide, and I also researched some other models of school-based wellness centers, both from looking up different articles and having conversations with either former colleagues or current administrators where they have a similar program. So what I will tell you is, it's relatively novel. A lot of schools who do have a school-based mental health program, it's a much more clinical program where students can access direct mental health services, whereas a Zen Den or a Wellness Center is more, is a kind of novel. There is one article published, and what they found, they surveyed 750 students, and what they found in general was that there was a statistically significant improvement in students feeling more successful, learning coping skills, and coming back in a better mood. One of the challenges that they did find was that there was some stigma in accessing mental health through the Wellness Center. This was a little bit more of a clinical program, as I had mentioned. But I think even going back and looking at the chronology of proposing this position, one of the focus was on de-stigmatizing and creating a place where people could come together and have conversations and feel like they could speak about their mental health and how they were coping. So I will also speak from my prior experience. I had the opportunity to write a grant for, at the time it was called a Zen Den, and there was such a positive response from students to be able to prioritize a space where they could go and decompress. And one of the challenges that we had is, it's really difficult to get students in and engaged sometimes. And when the center was intermittently closed because the typical staff had, you know, a crisis or a meeting, that students started to come less and less when they found that it was less available to them. It wasn't necessarily the same go-to that it had been prior to it being fully staffed and open. So this was our informal survey. On one of the days, we had three questions out within the Wellness Center. What has been the best part of the Wellness Center? What would you improve? And any other comments? So in the student's own handwriting, if you can read it, there, cookies are a big one. Teenagers like food, not surprisingly. But also beyond that, and dogs. There's even a picture there. But overall, it was the sense of being a safe place, being a place where they felt connected. They talked about having adult connection and having teachers who are available to them. I think when we thought about the, prior to me coming here, and the inception of this was really to create a warm place where students could have that adult connection, because we know that that helps foster resilience. And having one person to speak to really helps whenever a student is struggling. I also have, so for my, another form of validity, I did not, I was not involved in the creation of the yearbook, but I know that being in the yearbook is often an important thing. And I'm going to not do this word justice. Huga? Is that about right? All right. My sweetest mother-in-law would give me some coaching on this. But just as a notice, like in that first paragraph, I think it really highlights the experience of our students, right? Sometimes the smallest, most seemingly insignificant moments can bring immense joy to our lives. In Year 1, on page 2 of the yearbook, they reference free cookies in the Wellness Center. So when we're looking for opportunities to impact our kids' lives, the fact that it's in the forefront is really telling. They also have a second page, which independently of our informal survey asks, why do you visit the Wellness Center? I don't know if anyone's seen this. First of all, compliments to the yearbook committee. It's a beautiful book, really well done. But some of the comments is, why do you visit the Wellness Center? It's a great place where you feel like you're loved and cared about, awesome place to hang out, to relax and chill from the stress of school. You can get free snacks and tranquility. I think it's pretty sick, which in this context is a positive term. I love going there with my friends to hang around and chill out. So I think it just speaks to have students feel there. And so the question is, what about a Wellness Center coordinator? Is that a necessary position? And if so, looking at all of that information, what would be the recommendation? I very much think that a Wellness Center coordinator is needed for the reasons I mentioned. One of the things that they can help do is increase the staffing throughout the day. So when a student is having a difficult time and they pop down, there's somebody there. There's an opportunity for them, rather than going to a place and being alone, they have access to different coping skills. Coordinate programming and maintain a calendar of wellness offerings. Through Well-Being Week, we saw that there was an opportunity to offer things, whether it's regarding sleep hygiene or managing stress, and that takes some coordination. The yoga had to be in a gym area, so we had to coordinate where it was and who was going to be their supervision as well. But it also helps with making connections with students who might need more support to other staff in the building, or as I'm going to talk about later, the Teen Talk counselor. That person as a constant has more opportunity to get a sense of what's going on in the room. Instead of the rotation of having different people every hour, they get a sense of what is the culture, what is the climate, how can I connect the student to whatever? is the culture, what is the climate, how can I connect the student to, to whatever resources they might need. And also engaging in community resources. One of the things that I've been so astounded by is the amount of resources and support and individuals who are willing to help within our community and creating that community-school connection, whether it's the therapy dogs and some of the individuals who are authorized to bring them in and train them and supervise them are also community members. So it provides an opportunity for students to interact with their community resources as well. And establish an online presence to promote programming. Kids live online. It'd be great if they could log in and say, okay, wellness is being offered on Thursday, a test prep, how to de-stress after an exam or prior to an exam is offered on Wednesday, right? This is where they're going to have a live calendar of events where they can connect and see and hope ahead. And then student engagement. I think, again, just having the presence of another adult in the building would be really of benefit to those who may be less likely to interact. So my first recommendation would be to have that coordinator. I think that coordinator, also maintaining an online presence can help the website so we can know as parents kind of what topics are being addressed in the Wellness Center, maybe even Connecticut, connecting it to our advisory lessons so it can be reinforced and parents and students can have access to it. So the next charge that I was given was to assess Teen Talk at the middle school. We're moving forward with it at the high school. There's an individual who's been identified. We had students as part of the interview process, which was extremely helpful to get their perspective, and a question about whether or not makes sense at the middle school. So I've spent some time at the middle school. I've gotten a sense of kind of what some of their concerns are, what some of their strengths are, and at this point, I'll talk a little bit more about the data I've collected and then future considerations. So I met with the Teen Talk director. I got a better understanding of how Teen Talk also interfaces with middle schoolers and how it's a conduit to other resources through Kids in Crisis. I also met specifically with the Kids in Crisis staff to talk a little bit about what other middle schools, they do work with a lot of middle schools. They've been working in schools for 20 years. I had the ability to work with a Teen Talk counselor in my former district and it was very positive. So administrator and staff conversations, I think there's been transition in the middle school. Right now, I think one of the challenges is in the mental health staff, we have some transitions and the needs are changing. So we've identified some of the questions that the administration would like to ask of Teen Talk, and they've also expressed that it would be helpful to have some of their new staff be part of those conversations moving forward. And again, we looked at, I looked at some models of third-party kind of counseling interventions, they tend to be more clinical, more intensive, which then can muddy the waters a little bit in terms of where a student might go for certain support. So at this point, while I've gathered some data, I really think that it makes sense to hold off on a recommendation until I have additional data. First, the high school was very clear that the students also really appreciate in Teen Talk that they could have somebody that while at the school was also a separate entity from school staff that might be involved in their, you know, college transition. That was very clear from the students. It's a little bit different in middle school, so I want to, there's the principal's council, there's student council, and I'm going to meet with those groups to get a sense from them in terms of counseling need and what supports they think that could be provided to them. Offer professional consultation with Teen Talk and middle school. At this point, there's not been a direct meeting between who would be the person through Teen Talk kind of vetting the candidates and the middle school staff, so we have arranged for either very end of the summer or the beginning of the school year for that leadership staff at the middle school to meet with the director of Teen Talk. A benefit of staggering implementation is, part of Teen Talk is also there's ongoing data collection. So while we have somebody at the high school, they can collect, usually it's mid-year data, and we can also have them collect monthly data on things like number of visits that they've had. They actually collect data through, and their system is called Apricot, that looks at some of the topics that they're addressing, efficacy, things like that. So I think we have the advantage if we stagger it out to look at the high school model, how it's going, and then make recommendations for what it might look like at the middle school. So that's, that's what I would like to see. Also, we might need some kind of school climate data. Initial data has shown that at the middle school, even using some of our DESA data, that particular sixth and seventh grade seems to be grades where there's increased need around social emotional, so we can kind of assess that a little bit further through school climate data and then really make a strong recommendation about whether or not it makes sense. I think the big thing at the middle school is there is some transition, there's some additional needs that need to be assessed before we say, I'm ready to go ahead with that. So.
Dr. Dad, thank you very much for that presentation. I'll kick it off with a question, and I literally just thought about this as you're talking about Teen Talk in the middle school. We've, we've got the data, the information, the success about the Wellness Center at the high school. Is a Wellness Center at the middle school a good first step prior to Teen Talk? Is that something you, you've thought about or is that something that's come up?
I have. I think that, again, it's that, I think there's having that conversation and assessing a little more fully once they have staff in place that's there. I think that it could be a good opportunity and I want to be mindful of the leadership of the middle school staff and the space that's available. I think that's another issue is where it would be, how likely are students to access it? So I think having that student focus group would help, asking those questions to them.
Great. I don't have, and as much as I've been up there, I should just ask or go look for it. Where is the Wellness Center at the high school? Like go in the front door.
The old chills.
It's the old chills.
The old chills, okay.
The former, excuse me.
The former chills, okay. My only, you know, thought would be to continue to keep us informed. I worry about stuff taking off, is there enough space? Is there enough privacy in there? Is there enough privacy for students to meet with Teen Talk? I'm sure they're, they can go meet somewhere else maybe or use an empty office somewhere, but a huge part of this has some confidentiality to it.
Sure.
So, you know, just something to think about. There's limited space up there, but you know, if it's the right thing for the students, we need to figure that out from a space perspective. I guess my, my other question, something you said is the students find there's limited places for them to go at the high school. And I pause in that it's a big high school, there's a phenomenal library, there's a huge renovated cafeteria, there's outdoor space and good weather. I know people like hanging out in the bridge, there's a whole auditorium. So what does that mean? People find it difficult to find places to go to? Is it for, for quiet time, reflective time to be by themselves?
I, I think it's, I think it might even be more around where there's something to do, if I were to finish that sentence and infer from it. Because there's, there's kind of, one of the things that we know post-COVID is that kids are expressing more social anxiety. So independently structuring time even for teenagers is actually a little bit more difficult than it used to be. So I think having things available to them, having a cooperative game, you know, it, it gives them something to do collaboratively and kind of diminishes some of that social anxiety because they're working on something or they're, they're watching a Zookam together and they can comment on it. So I think part of it is also an inferred kind of, I'm not really sure what to do in these open spaces and connect with other kids, whereas you're connecting around a task or some kind of activity.
Fair enough. I would assume, I don't know schedule-wise, that all those spaces are open throughout the day.
Yeah, the kids come in, come in like, like the high school library, our students would come in in the morning, and for nearly, nearly a year there, they were completing a huge Jigsaw puzzle on their own collaboratively, just as a group, we grouped together just on their own.
Good, thank you. Board question, Sarah.
Do you have a sense of how many students are taking advantage of the Wellness Center? Like I'm thinking like on a website, like unique hits, you know, how many, how many students are actually partaking?
Yeah, so, so one of the things that I think with a Wellness Coordinator, I didn't really touch upon this, is the opportunity for more concrete data collection. Because you have rotating staff, it's hard. I think at one point, it was, and this was, I reviewed kind of Ellen's data from earlier, I think she said between 40 and 50 per lunch period, but that's also, there's a lot of kids who spend part of a period there in and out, ideally what I'd love to see. And in one of the districts I consulted to that had a similar program, they had somebody who was there who had an iPad with a quick check-in, check-out, how many people were here, did you do an activity, how were you feeling before, how were you feeling after? So I would love to be able to aggregate more data, and I think that also requires having a person there who can kind of oversee that and redirect it. So right now, it's just random sampling of numbers. Thank you.
So what, what challenges does that present, us capturing data of a student checking in or out of a Wellness Center and asking them what activities they did?
I think you can do it as a, a universal, it doesn't have to be specific to the student. I think it just helps us quantify how many students are accessing it, where are areas where they find kind of, what are they gravitating towards the most so we can make sure that more of that continues? Or is there a need? Is there something that they would, similar to our informal, is there anything else that would be helpful? Someone had mentioned, it'd be great to have a fish tank in here, something that's soothing or relaxing. So I think it just helps quantify when you're talking about things even like space and number of visits. We'll have some very basic data around usage.
Thank you. Dennis?
Kind of following on, excuse me, that topic with the online presence, would that be anonymous or is that something you can, you would want to track where people are going, especially for resources, to see what, what, what things are ticking? And then if, if yes, can we discern between parents and students?
That's a, that's a good question, and I will tap into my own technology limitations, and I can't necessarily say exactly what that would look like, but my thought was also to use it as just an opportunity for promotion of what's happening in the Wellness Center so people have more awareness of what's happening in it. And then maybe as they check in, or if they register, I know for like Wellbeing Week, they had to register for yoga because there's only a certain number of spaces. So if there's something that requires some pre-registration, there'd probably be some link there, and then we can aggregate that data if it's something that there's one bit spaced. But if nothing else, then it's an opportunity to advertise and get the word out for different events that are happening in the Wellness Center and then through kind of their entrance in and out of the Wellness Center, we could track how much usage there was there.
And I guess, I guess my question is, will there be resources on specific websites or things to go and look through to get answers to questions? And will that data be captured?
Yeah. Um, I'll, I'll give that some thought. I've been updating like our mental health resources page, so through that, I would see kind of some synergy there between the mental health resources and the Wellness Center. I think that, that could be something that we could track, and I'm not really sure exactly at this point what that would look like, but I think it's an opportunity.
So if I'm looking at the numbers, this is a full-time FTE. Will there be any coverage by some of the folks that have been teachers and admins that have been using, going to the Wellness Center and helping?
Yeah, I, I think so, one of the things that's already happened with Wellness Center is it's provided students with an opportunity to meet other support staff that maybe they wouldn't have, and I would like to see that continue. So obviously, there'll be coverage for when that individual has, has lunch. And I also heard in my meeting with like the psychologists and social workers, they'd love an opportunity to do more work with groups. So it might provide an opportunity if there's someone coordinating, hey, this is a passion that I really have, talking to students about executive functioning, they could also come in there and lead a workshop or, or use that time in a way to connect with more students. So I don't see them going away by any means. I think that they're still an integral part of the programming, and I think it might also be that conduit so they could come down and meet more students. I think that the benefit is if there is a crisis, it can remain open, right? If, if that counselor has a crisis or that support staff, you can still keep the Wellness Center open during that time.
Okay, and the consistency that you mentioned by having one person there brings a lot of value in your, your opinion?
It does, because I think what you can also do is real-time programming, right? If you're there all, all day and we know how quickly information moves across teenagers and social media, if there's something that's kind of bubbling, that individual could reach out to me, reach out to Ellen, reach out to the counselors and say, hey, this is what we're seeing, and then we can have real-time response and do some programming or kind of take it from there. So I think it also allows one person being there to have a little bit more of a pulse of what's going on.
Okay, so this is approved from a finance perspective, we're gonna, we talked about this a little in finance, we're going to be using grant monies for the, this upcoming fiscal year.
Only for the upcoming.
Okay, so just to be clear, because we've been accused of not for casting an additional FTE, the 24, 25 budget could then have a proposal for an additional FTE.
Correct.
Okay, so we've talked about it, we flagged it.
I think it's, to your point, it's clear that it is an additional FTE paid by grant money for the next fiscal year.
And then, and then the following fiscal year, we won't have the grant money available. Dr. Dad, you did mention, is this something that you could write a grant for, for continued funding? Or you could search to see if there are grants out there?
I think I can search to see if there's grants out there. I know that I'm a little bit new to the grant writing process, and there are people who have been, you know, helpful in terms of writing. I recently wrote a grant for some, some of our mental health supports, and I think that there is a lot of focus. I can't say that there will be a grant, however, with the mental health needs, I've seen a good number of grants related to mental health.
I think there's been legislation, potential funding and stuff like that. I think the board would like to understand what potential dollars are available for this, from the state, if and when there are grants available and, you know, how we go about accessing them. I think that's important. I mean, everything you read, there seems to be trying to free up or look for, create buckets of money for various things at the state. We might be out of the box in terms of where we fit, you know, from an economic standpoint, but I think we'd want to understand it. Jill?
So thank you, I appreciate the presentation. I want to ask, we asked you, you know, does, does a Wellness Center coordinator make sense? But if we back up a little bit and you were given a blank check on this check for anything you wanted to purchase, would you purchase still a Wellness Center coordinator? And if so, why is, would that be your priority? Not why is it a good idea, but why would that be the priority?
It would be a priority. I had written a grant in another district because I felt passionately about it, and I thought it's an opportunity for students just to realize that also the district is prioritizing mental health and balance. And I did write a district, I did write a grant for that district in the hopes that we could staff it longer. It was really heartbreaking when kids were like, oh, I found it really helpful and no one was there, so I couldn't go in. It's also an opportunity to showcase things, like we had student art, like you could showcase student work that's beyond what we traditionally think of as, you know, academic performance only. It also provides an opportunity for staff. I would love to see it grow. When I previously wrote a grant, I just also thought this is an opportunity for staff to kind of take a moment, take a breath, and model that for our students. I'll come in and do some deep breathing or, so I absolutely would have, if it, when I walked in and it was already there, I'm like, oh, this is like a better version of deja vu. So absolutely.
So to that, and just sort of building on the previous conversation, what was the timing where you looked at a grant the first time? My point being, some of what we think we're experiencing is post-COVID, were you also looking at a post-COVID environment when you were looking at it? Or if not, what do you think the driver is today and in the future?
Yeah, that was pre-COVID, and I think it was still, you know, we know that our students are experiencing a lot of pressure and the mental health needs were growing pre-COVID. Stress and anxiety and depression were unfortunately growing, and then COVID really added fuel to that fire. So, and the grant wasn't a state grant, it was through like a parent association that started the program. But I think, again, that just reinforces that this was already an issue pre-COVID, and on top of that, now we have all of the kind of mental health fallout from COVID as well, so I don't think the need's gone down. Thank you.
Julie?
Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate the thoughtful consideration of Teen Talk for the middle school, and I appreciate and recognize that there is transition there. I think, I'll speak for myself, I believe that there, there is need at the middle school. I think a lot of us would agree with that, and I just want to ask, especially because there is transition, is there anything else we need to be doing at the middle school more immediately or anything else we could or should be doing there?
I think, just looking at some of the initial data, I want to see what the last round of data regarding the DESA kind of evaluation showed, but I think that some of that data can also inform some of the things that are done through that flex time on meeting early on. I'm also doing some additional professional development in there. I was working with principal there and really thinking about, after our retreat, had some ideas around professional development. I also plan on spending a good amount of time with the new staff that's there and providing extra supervision and ongoing check-ins. And I was also, I did a professional development at their faculty meeting. development at their faculty meeting. And I was, there was a sense of connection, community, and I think that, that there was a lot of good conversations that had, had already been started there. So I think just being present and me being available as a resource, but also like helping with the new staff that's coming in there assessing, and having the voice of some of the mental health staff in more of the meetings will be helpful. So more specifically, I think it's really just providing more support, supervision, helping with the transition and assessing further.
Katie, anything you wanted to add? Okay, good.
Anyone else from a board perspective?
Thank you, Dr. Dad. We appreciate the update. Please keep us informed. I think Julie brings up a good point that I think you've been around long enough to hear that we're here to support. So there's nothing you can't come to us and ask for, you know, build a case, show us the need. But, you know, I'd rather be ahead of stuff than behind stuff in terms of needs around student needs and specifically around, you know, mental health and support. So someone, when I first started on the board, you used to talk about the scaffolding that we need for our students. So I think we all appreciate that you're here. So just continue to come to us with what you feel are the needs to continue to support the overall mental health of our students and our staff. Great, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
First of all, thank you very much, Dr. Dad. I just want to clarify where we stand with it. I don't think that there's a need for a particular vote, per se, since it's a grant execution. But unless the board is in a kit and otherwise, I would.
I think it'll come up through the normal budget process for further discussion, or you'll, you'll show it as an ad in the budget process.
Yes, but we, this was for, for this particular year, this particular year for September.
Okay.
Because the money is sitting there in the grant. So that was the recommendation to come back relatively quickly, but within a reasonable timeframe regarding this, so that we could actually get somebody up and running for September if it was recommended to.
Because the money, we said at finance, the money has to be expended by when?
June 30, 2024.
Yeah, so we've used it this year.
So it changes the supervision of the high school potentially right, right now, basically.
Yep, yep, all right, good.
Okay, thank you very much.
Someone else for you to hire, Mark.
Alicia, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Much appreciated.
Thank you, Dr. Dad.
You too, thank you. All right, Mr. Manfredonia, thank you for joining us this evening. You're going to quickly walk through the proposed athletic trips for 2023, 2024?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Janine.
Thank you.
Front of you are the annual requests for the overnight trips for the athletic teams for the 2324 school year. Many of these trips are going to be continued upon qualifying either teams or individuals. So some of these trips may not happen, but they might, depending on how successful our students are during the course of the regular season, especially for the sports of track and cross country and sailing. For example, you'll see, I think there are six requests for sailing overnights. Sailing will not be taking six overnight trips, but there's a possibility they could be taking two or three of those trips, depending on how they progress during the course of the season. As we have done in the past, the district would cover the cost of these trips for any entry fees, with the families covering the costs of the overnight hotels, transportation and food.
Chris, is there anything new or different on here year over year? Anything added or?
The only thing that's different that you had not seen last year was is an opportunity for our field hockey team to compete in a, in a national tournament in Pennsylvania in September. That I don't think you've seen before, but the rest you have seen in years past.
Okay, thank you, Chris.
Yep.
Mr. Seeny? Just a clarifying question, Chris. So you designate these as field trips if they're an overnight component. So going to Long Island to play, you know, Minhasset lacrosse for the day is not considered a field trip then?
Correct. And if these are just overnight trips.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Any other board questions or thoughts?
Julie?
Just to confirm, Chris, all of these are treated the same way? The, the families are fundraising, covers housing and travel costs, and school pays the fees?
Correct. The school pays the fees, and then the families will cover all the extra costs, hotels, transportation and food. Yep.
For coaches, housing and food are those covered?
Those be covered by the, by the families as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Joe?
Chris, the new trip, the field hockey trip, what was, just can you give us the background of how that came to be?
Yeah, there's been a national invitational tournament held the last several years in Pennsylvania. There have been some other local area academic schools that have participated, Staples being one of our, you know, main competitors. They reached out to us, see if we interested, we said we would. Obviously, continuing on being approved tonight. And so we are excited to have the opportunity to play against some of the nation's best programs at that tournament.
Good, all right, we'll move forward. May I have a motion to approve the proposed athletic field trips for the 2023, 2024 school year? Mr. Maroney, second by Mrs. McCammon, all those in favor? That is unanimous with Katie, all those present. Thank you. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Muffin.
All right, we'll move on to initial discussion and of possible board of education goals and strategic plan goals and strategies and actions for 2024. Dr. Dad?
So these are for the board's consideration. And the board had asked, can we see these a wee bit earlier in the process? So this is a wee bit early in the process, likely to be revisited at the board retreat. I will say that, thank you to the administration for their, their input, my colleagues. Goal four, we had a wee bit of a trial run with, with the communications committee. So they give feedback on what they might like to see there. So all the goals themselves are up for consideration. I don't have particular ownership. I have, I have interest. And obviously, I would like to help the board where they want to have particular goals. So these are ones that we've, we felt were relevant. That doesn't mean to say others are not. But you can see those and read those for your own. If you want, want to talk about them one by one, we certainly can. But the board members have different opinions and so on. Of course, their board goals, so they're, they're here for, literally just as a start of discussion for, for the board this evening.
Any initial comments or thoughts on everyone's first read? Sure, Dave?
Just had one question on goal area one, item one B in the action column at the bottom. We're talking about years three through five, and it's talking about EduPlanet 21 platform being up and running by fiscal year 27. That just seems.
You're looking.
Oh, I jumped ahead.
You jumped ahead.
Okay. Sorry, sorry, Dave.
That's, that's admin goals.
Sorry, my bad.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm just trying to true up to our, the core values and making sure that all of them are represented here. I'm not seeing anything about, oh, maybe, maybe it's, maybe the more admin goals than board of education goals. But, you know, innovation, diversity, inclusion, equity, not sure where those fall in here. And maybe those are more district goals rather than board goals. And so I'm going to help you clarify.
So I would say that the idea of support in year three implementation of the strategic plan, the vision of the graduates were, that is asking board to support.
That makes sense. We just wasn't explicit. That's fine.
Joe?
Overall, I like this as a set of goals for the board. I think it's, you know, worth thinking about whether or not we agree. But in general, I think that's, it's directionally correct, and I appreciate the work that went into it. On goal two, I have one small add, and that is the work on, I'm going to put, I'm going to argue that it should go within the short and long term budgeting. It's really bigger than that. But, but the better aligning our agendas, our daily agendas, our master agenda, our strategic plan, just making sure that those are all, those documents are coherent and talking to each other. We talked about this a couple months ago. And just, you know, that iterative process. So I don't know, I've just spilled out a lot of words. But if you could make that into just a short bullet.
Can you?
I'm, I'm looking for alignment between the strategic plan and master agenda and our daily agendas.
Perfect. Thank you. That was for number?
I would say put it under goal two, because that's where it fits best, even though it's kind of being shoehorned in there.
I wonder if we could rename goal two, to take, the budgeting is not the highlight. I don't know. I see where it fits.
Effective, effective.
You could put it under.
Effective management of, of meetings and annual agendas.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah, you know what? Actually, we could move it under three, raised on that instead of number two. And, and yeah.
My only, my only thought is, because we've had this discussion a couple of times, is implementation, support year three implementation of strategic plan. And I think there's, there's further discussion to be had in the next document. But I think, I also want to make sure that there are any changes or updates that we have that conversation to the strategic plan. You know, I think it's not just about implementing. And I think come year three, there may be some changes, some updates, some different things we want to do. So yes, revising strategic, yep.
But to me, that, the question I have on that Duke is revise strategic plan to meet district needs seems like cart before the horse kind of thing to me. Or maybe I'm just reading this incorrectly. But to me, the strategic plan, the should be, the needs fill into the strategic plan, not the needs then decide. I mean, I'm wording this properly, but it seems backwards to me.
No, I hear you. Yeah. Well, I think, I think we, I think there's work to be done. I think with, you know, Amy joining us, I think with, we've got more work and more follow up to do on the DEI presentation that was given to us. I think that's all stuff we're going to have to take into consideration. But to your point, I think it, the overall plan drives, you know, the districts. I hear what you're saying. I can't say it right.
But I also understand what.
Yeah.
Yeah, how it was worded, too. So we just got to figure out a way to.
We're all using AI to understand each other.
I think I asked this last year, but should it be something more like review or revisit strategic plan to make sure it's meeting district needs? I don't, I don't necessarily think we need to presume that it needs to be revised until we've had the conversation, which is where you're going to.
You know, I think a big component of it was the DEI, which we had the presentation on. We've now, Dr. Dad has joined us. We've spent a lot of time and energy on wellness. We're, we're looking at how that expands. So I think it's time to go back and say, what within that strategic plan needs to continue to evolve as the district has evolved?
Yep.
Yep, good.
So I just want to make sure, because I walk away from here, and then I decide where, where, how would you like we proceed for the next discussion? Which will probably be at the board retreat, right? So is there any work you want me to do or contemplate or edit or advise, or just bring this back once you guys, the board has had a chance to look at it?
Well, under goal three, what Duke, just for strategic work, we're going to have more effective planning and management of our meetings. And then one of the measure is better alignment between the strategic plan, the master agenda and the.
I think they capture those words.
Would you like to send me those? If the board's.
Absolutely.
Did you get Julie's review, the strategic plan?
Yes, I have that one, yes.
Can I have one more thought? It, it might be a little half baked, but I'll throw it out there now, so it's not a surprise later. I'm wrestling with whether or not I feel like there's enough education in our goals. I mean, it's kind of, it's obviously understood that our overall goal is to provide an excellent academic experience or education for our students. And that's in our mission, it's in our vision. But just to make sure that we're keeping that as part of the conversation as we need to be, I want to go through these again in a little more detail and just make sure that it feels like there's enough of that there, both for our goals and when we get into the next portion.
I will say here, we specifically called out the vision of the graduate to, to continue that work K to 12, pre-K to 12, actually, which just gets to.
Thank you.
So are these, I, I mean, I, I kind of agree with, with Julie. I'm, as I'm thinking through this, I, I think as we've talked and we've kind of as a board prioritize what we think our goals are and what the district should be focused on. And we did, we had a lot of that conversation through budget, through the budget cycle. But, you know, ensure the safety and wellness of all students and staff, and continue to deliver an exceptional educational experience to our students. So maybe there's a component of that in there, because we are taking up a lot of work around curriculum, around policy. And I think it doesn't get into the weeds, but it keeps consistent with our charge.
I agree. And that's, it was in the budget discussions that this first kind of started bubbling around in my head, that we spend a lot of time talking about the things that we're focused on, security and wellness and, and other priorities. But we need to constantly true up again to the fact that, at the very beginning, we're, we're providing the education. So just to keep that in there.
So I, I agree in general with what's being said here. I think the difficulty is, I think a lot of what we're talking about really belongs in the strat plan. And I, so I, I appreciate that we have this version of it so we can see the next couple of years. I would like to see this again, overall, written for year three, with a level of specificity. And that would include mental health, security, education, a lot of that stuff.
What written for year three?
This. I want to see goal six, how does it look in year three? What's Q1, Q2, Q3, Q4? And I can walk through.
Yes. It does say, well, that's a different opinion. It does say goal three, year three, that's what it.
I know. But what I'm saying is, so if like I go to 1A, and I look at what.
Jump in the other one.
What I'm, on purpose, because what I'm saying is, I think that a lot of the educational content that we're looking for belongs in goal one.
Yes.
A lot of the safety and security content that we're looking for has a place inside of these goals.
Yes, correct.
And that that's where, this is at such a high level.
These goals versus?
The, inside of the strategic plan goals.
Thank you.
The strategic plan goals should stay in place, but the actual work and the measures are at such a high level that we can't see what we're talking about. So I'd like to see them come down a level for year three.
Get flushed out. Yes.
Do you have Gant charts?
Well, David.
Gant charts, G A N T. Yeah, we can wrestle.
I mean, I have, I can.
Okay.
Throw some things out there, but.
Joe, a follow up. Anything you want to go through on the strategic plan, or we covered that?
So the strategic plan was updated by administration, looking at, trying to pull out what, what, what has been done already, because we've been given the updates as we've gone along, tried to identify anything that was year three or five onwards, and updating it accordingly. There's very little added, but they certainly have been reviewed for our current status and that year three makes sense. We have changed no strategies. So none of that has changed. But we may have updated, right at the front door here, the finalized drafted version of the district of teaching and learning principles with the PDAC. That's because they've been drafted at the final stage now. So you can see there were years, I included, they didn't just pull out year three, it, it sort of included year three to five, just to give.
Yeah.
Currently, kind of the current status of it. So you'll see there, so for instance, and I'll take, I'll take one C, aligned job better professional development. You'll see in here that it establishes instructional rounds process for the whole district, which is sort of all the schools doing instructional rounds practices as a, as a, as a group and not just an individual administrator type thing. So you'll see what we've, we've edited a few. I mean, I do need the board to look at this. Some of the measures have changed a little bit or otherwise to try to accommodate that. I'll point some things out as I go along. Goal two, the wellness, implement considerations, the DEI team report was a big part of that. Goal three.
Can I stop you? Or can we, how do you want to handle?
Go to, go back to goal.
So, so in that case, like we, as we went through the DEI report, we called out that we need to prioritize and see data surround. So, okay, so that, that is included is part of the work.
Part of the process.
Okay, thank you.
It's not like cherry pick one, two, three.
Right, okay.
So I have cherry pick one, and I'll point it out in a moment.
Okay.
So this goal two is an example where there, you know, I understand implement considerations of the DEI report. I think that there are specific components inside of that action. So you talked about reviewing it, actually make prioritizing, and then, you know, so, so I think that's what's, I'm saying, I'd like to see it for a year so that I can see Q1 is, I'm making this up, Q1 is your review, Q2 is your recommendation, you know, whatever.
Three is implementation, Q4 is.
Yes. Similarly, we just talked about the wellness center, and we're talking about team talk. There's a lot of, I think probably a lot of the mental health work that we're doing probably belongs under this goal. And I'd like to see some of that appear here explicitly. So I understand it's written at a high level, but I'll stop talking about it.
So one of the things that would help me, Joe, is just to continue this discussion. And I can just use your example, it's not personally, but I want to make sure all the board is agreeing, like, the, the level of change that we're, that we're requiring is.
Sure.
Yeah, it's not so much change, just a little detail, right? Because it said, you know, considerations of the DEI, well, that would mean every one, right? So without the context of that, we'd have to prioritize, we'd be expected to address every one. And I don't think that's the intent coming out of that report.
Yeah, but I think too, like, no, this may be getting too much in the weeds, but where, you know, when you do the prioritization, like, if I think back and just, you know, overall feedback and looking through the report, like, one of the reads that I get is that our teachers are still looking for more professional development, they're still looking for help day to day on how to interact with the students, you know? I, I don't feel, I feel like after year two, they've got what they needed. after year two, they've got what they needed out of it. So how does that become a priority? To me, that should be like, how do we start that in Q one and Q two and Q three and Q four? I mean, that's like, to me, you look at that, that's, you know, it's more of a business term, but that's an easy win. Here's what the teachers are looking for. Let's put together a program within the DEI framework that helps them with more professional development or education with what they are seeing as challenges in terms of their ability to talk or interact with students that are coming to them. You know, with challenges. So I think that's, you know, that's kind of feedback that I've gotten in terms of what specific teachers are looking for.
So there's a wee bit of that included in the professional capacity goal. If I can just touch on a couple of things, just, 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 I mean, I'm not deliberately avoiding one or, or, right? I'm at the goal number three, uh, may, may just seem, may even just pass over it. Actually, we've called this the vision of the graduate and changed from the portrait of the graduate because it's, it's, there's a level of confusion here. It's actually just a reflection of the contemporary use of the term. It's widely accepted to use now vision of the graduate by NEAS and so on, so forth. The portrait of the graduate being sort of static in nature. Um, so you'll see I have changed here, just literally anywhere where it said port to the graduate, that's, I've changed to say vision of the graduate, the staff right here.
Right.
I did, I'm sorry. Good. Um, so good check, sir. I appreciate that. Uh, right. Well, so we didn't catch one of them, but there you go. But that's, that's how real alignment is. And we can do edits right at the table. So, but that's, I just wanted to point that I did. I think it's a wee bit semantic for, for, for us, but it's, it's really helpful for the community and messaging and, and our staff.
So staying on the, on three, but also again, looking for some specificity. If I look at three C, where we're talking about post-secondary opportunities, we had some conversations about transition planning and, and post-secondary opportunities. So again, I'd like to see some of that reflected.
Yes, okay.
I, I just wanted to concur that, um, Jill, to your point also, I had transitional planning and programs is one of my bullets, but it doesn't appear there. So in regard to what everyone's saying, um, transitional planning and programs was one piece and data and progress monitoring to inform instruction was another. But if it's not there, you won't know what we're thinking. So I'll certainly work on that.
Thank you.
So when you say sticking with that on, on three B, develop systems to measure and form and enhance implementation of the graduate, and then you go over to measures, you've got documentation of a new system. So I just, you know, are there investments we're going to make system wise? Is that the new replacement for Aspen? You know, I think an understanding of something like that. So at the end of the day, um, if I'm reading this correctly, we are going to implement the vision of the graduate in year three.
Well, in year three, our big drive is to create some synergy around K to, K to 12 around it. If there's a specific question you have, there may be some specific action that we're taking in year three. Yes. This is going to be a long-term project.
Right. I guess I just, I, you know, I guess I've heard about it for so long. I know some good work's been done around it, but I'm like, when does it get implemented and when do we see how it works?
It's happening. Didn't we have students at the high school this year, uh, writing essays on certain areas?
Yes, they did. It's all the seniors did reflections on them.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's going to take a lot of time to create culture around this. That's not unexpected.
Again, as, but again, I think maybe it's, you guys tell me this, maybe just me, but, um, I wouldn't mind an update on it, you know, the vision of the graduate. So.
Yeah, I can tell you to do that.
Well, I, I think if we can go to more of a, what year three looks like, then you would show us with some more specifics of where we are in the process of that. Um, you know, we've, whatever year three looks like, you'll tell us, right, Alan?
Yeah, some of this is, some of this is trying to tell you. Um, so there may be other levels of specificity that the board would like.
But I think too, like, um, and this might, might all be in here, Alan, but I think of the conversation we had earlier in the board meeting about, it's not just about the vision of the graduate, you know, to me includes those that are going on to four-year
Of course, yes.
colleges, those are going into the service, those are going to trade schools, like, to me, that's kind of, that's kind of, I think, going to increase, you know, um, in terms of what opportunities look like after graduation. Okay. Go ahead, Dave.
I just had a follow up, uh, kind of to Jill. I'm just trying to visualize this a little bit, like thinking like Gantt chart or, and so the milestones here, um, are you saying we need more of sort of milestones or key performance indicators or different things we have to tick to really measure? That's what's missing here. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
The one thing, one of the things I'll say is I appreciate your discourse tonight because I'll just tell you, it's very rare. Not say very rare, but it's, it's not common practice to go through a level of strategic planning like this, right? A, that we initially did, B, to hold ourselves accountable for it and to continue to discuss every year, um, and revise or review as necessary. I think that's, that's a positive thing to do. So just, I'll just mention that just as a
Katie, I don't want to forget you're there. I know you'll raise your hand or shout, but anything you want to add there? You're good?
I'm good. Thank you.
All right, good.
Uh, we did in, we did indicate on goal four, the expanded and professional capital of the, um, uh, staff, two, two big things are, one is the increase, the opportunity for teacher voice and professional learning. That would include Mr. Chairman, the diversity, um, inclusion, uh, and also just in general, in terms of professional learning experience. So to create a greater voice there.
Should we, um, might be too in the weeds, but this group will let us, let me know. Um, I think of the interviews we just had and some of the turnover that we've had, is there a line item in here about succession planning? Is that, is that assumed in professional development?
It's assumed, it's, it's assumed at my level, but I don't know what, what Mr. Chairman, you would mean in your, in the terms of.
I just think we, we talk about, you know, sometimes we've been caught short with people leaving. So are, are we having the right conversations with people in that you're an elementary school principal, would love for you to be high school assistant principal, you know, where we want to build bench strength for all our schools. People retire. People move on. We hope more people retire than leave and that we can continue to move along. Like the young people we interviewed tonight, their energy and their excitement makes me feel very positive that we've got some good bench strength here. But how do we keep those folks motivated? And, and yeah, we do it by supporting them in continuing education and, and stuff like that. But, you know, do we sit there like from a business perspective and say, this is what it's going to take, Jill, for you to be, for you to become a vice president? You know, this is what you have to accomplish over the next year or two years. So, you know, maybe that's too in the weeds from an education standpoint.
No, it's not. It's not too in the weeds. And you, there are, I won't sugar by names, but there are people sitting there, both principals and assistant principals who those direct discussions have.
Clearly moved along, but I, I wanted, I want to make sure everyone feels that. I think, yeah, people leave, people retire, we put an interim, replace, re-interview, but we should talk more about how our staff is moving along, how we're helping them move along.
I, I think that part of what we are experiencing now is, um, greater staff mobility in a period of time where we're, there are less available staff. So I think this is the closest thing we have to an, a recruitment and retention goal. So I would ask administration with that lens, just to go back and double check this goal and make sure we've captured um, everything we want to capture in, in terms of thinking about recruiting and retaining. We're not, I know we have some contracts to negotiate this year, smaller ones, and they'll probably be done by the time we sign off on this, but.
Your comment of teacher mobility. Well, I think too, like, you know, you look at measures and I think, Marge, thank you very much for saying, you said overall, the contract has helped you from a recruiting standpoint. So I think that's a, that's a measurable kind of bullet.
We need, maybe she just presents, but I think we need to look at more opportunities for teacher leader positions. For example, Katie Risk was the elementary curriculum coordinator, which was in the teacher's unit, but then it was a natural pathway for her. So it was in here someplace and I, I'm scrolling through, trying to find it, but if we can, you know, it's not always budget neutral, but perhaps it can be.
She spoke eloquently about her progression and the stuff that she got involved with and how that helped her each step of the way in terms of her leadership.
It's under four A, Marge.
Good.
Uh, the teacher evaluation plan and having teacher voice in that is, is a critical role and, and the board's important, um, approving whatever comes through there. This is one that in full disclosure, I lifted from the gifted report. So I'm just telling you, like, I don't like it, that's fine. Um, but I just lifted it, uh, which is the increase in, as Shirley did, uh, for special education, teachers related staff providers to participate in professional development related to the general education curriculum. I thought it's, there would be agreement, uh, to lift that one right away. And just put it in there and make sure that, that we're doing that. So that's, that, that was one that not in full disclosure, I lifted from one of those recommendations. It's the only one we lifted from the recommendation currently. Uh, safety and security, you can see safety and security, um, enhancing systems and communication. There's a whole thing in communication about the communication expectation from the committee, essentially the nature of their work. And you can see comments about the physical facilities and also puts in some of the discussions we had about libraries, next step, living school. There's certainly room for discussion, or I just wanted to make sure we put things in and.
So this goal is really facilities, um, but we did just have a large security initiative. So I wanted to see that reflected. You guys can decide where it fits best. I don't know.
It's in here.
It is in here.
Yes, it's all, it's, it's, it's all the way through this. Yes.
First, you're in the enhanced training and, okay. Okay.
Yes, there's, there's safety throughout this. Essentially, if you look at the measures around that, that's, you know, goal six there, the first, the strategy in goal six, we can see other things we're trying to do. I mean, there's a lot in this, right? Um, and I'll just assure you of this, we didn't just haphazardly try to update this on the fly. Um, and it took a lot of input, a lot of thought. It's not perfect, but and, uh, goal seven was uh, the technology update and revisions.
Jill.
Um, so some things that I was looking for, you might have to point me, uh, we're looking at evaluating Aspen. I didn't see it. Is it there?
Uh, evaluating Aspen is not part of this particular, but it could be, it, it has come up. So when we could.
Think we probably want to.
I think it should be in here.
Yeah. Um, then the, there's a couple of things. Um, we are looking at our HR infrastructure for instructional technology. I think we would want to note that. Because I think we're trialing a new model this year, but with the idea that we want a long-term plan, probably by the end of the year.
Surely I would add, like, I know we've had good discussions and a lot of work's been done around tracking and all that stuff, but if there's anything systemically that we need to look at, add or discuss, I would like to see it built in here, you know, over and above what's set up now with the Google documents and everything. You know, I'm not sure if there's something systemically out there, or if it's the replacement of Aspen that helps you with some tracking. So it might be too generic, but I think you know what I mean.
Um, other things in here, um, we heard Francis talk about chat GPT and how that's changing, uh, teaching and learning. Um, and so I think whether you put it here, I, well, I think it belongs here. I, I don't know what kind of work the administration is planning this year, but he certainly mentioned the beginnings of some research on how we're responding, I think. But market, demarket or mark, marking the work here and then beginning to track it and define it is important. Um, and then lastly, under technology, um, I've had some conversations recently about policies about device use in buildings and how that works. And this, again, it's a little bit lower level, but, um, I'll just throw it out there as something I'm hearing.
What does that mean, Mr. McCann?
You know, in, in elementary school, in middle school, in high school, over and above bring your own device, but what does phone usage look like? In particular, I think it's our personal devices, not.
I think there's a, there's a desire by, I think especially the middle school parents that I've been talking to recently that would like to see either a policy or some, some sort of standard that's, you know, each classroom operates the same, so the kids know. But I don't, I mean, that's a, that's, again, that's not high level.
Okay, that's, that's right.
May I just ask a question to Jill? But right before the, um, phone usage and policies about device uses, I didn't catch what you said right before that.
About chat GPT?
I got it.
Just, you got it. Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Name it and.
Okay.
Yeah, just having to look at how it's impacting teaching and learning. Yeah, thank you. Can we go back to number one, please? So one of the things that was talked about a lot, and you might just need to translate for me, um, talked about in the last, particularly in the department chair conversations was, you know, using that sort of structured framework for developing education. We talked about UBD, we talked about UDL. Is that all in here? Can you help me read it?
I'm just going to, can I just take a wee moment just to?
Yes.
Uh, the units, the units themselves are anytime where we talk about units or talk about edge of planet, it's all that UBD design that's incorporated. And if you want to need to pull it out a wee bit more, it could, but, but, but that's embedded in that, yes.
Okay. And then what about UDL? How does that interact with what's here? And is that something that we're?
What, what are we talking about UDL?
Universal design for learning.
Oh, great. I'm just trying, I just want a clarification. Um, I don't have that in, I don't think that's in here.
Is that part of the work that we're planning?
Well, it's the individual, we are planning the individual instruction for, for all students.
But I think UDL is meant to make that what you learn from individual instruction, make it accessible for everyone.
Right.
So I'd like to understand if that's part of our strategic work. Okay. Last question. Uh, and then the gifted, what you found from the gifted? I know we have in here individualized learning, but, um, you know, we had, we had a conversation about, we had that huge gifted, uh, presentation that we've had a conversation about looking at our ninth grade in particular, also our eighth grade. Where is all, can you just help me read? Where is all that in here?
I think there's room for discussion, because we have to revisit that. We had the presentation, we had the recommendations. Um, there's, there's not a lot, like just lifted from there, because I've just given you an example of one where I did live on recommendation. Uh, I think we have to come back to the board with the same as like the E I, right? The recommendations are sitting there.
Yeah.
I've been sensitive not to go too far in that process quickly until we get, um, a replacement our assistant superintendent on board, which will be here to start Monday, but usually be here tomorrow.
Okay.
We start to have those discussions around
Okay.
Uh, where we've left off these various reports and how we bring it back and move forward with recommendations.
Okay.
I mean, because we have to come back, if you recall, I did say some of these, some of these presentations, we need just some time to, to, to dissect these, right? And bring back recommendations to the board.
And I would be comfortable even just de-notating that we're, you know, we're looking at it and planning to come back.
We must need a list of everything that's kind of hanging out there.
A lot less.
Yeah. Going back to the temple chats.
Davis's hand up, dude.
Dave, please.
Uh, since we jumped back to one B, I guess, I think you answered it, uh, Alan, talking about FY twenty seven. I think you talked about this three to five is looking beyond the five-year term as well.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And again, I just, this, so twenty seven is when we think we're done. So another four years to do that move.
I think, could you just tell me which one we're looking at, David?
Of course, we're looking at one B and this is in the action column, the last item, the last row there, develop a comprehensive plan to develop and transfer all units of study in Edgeline twenty-one platform by fiscal year twenty seven.
So I did, I, that, that's not a, that's not a mistake, right? Um, although I did question that, um, and I want to continue to have that discussion with our assistant superintendent when she arrives, because it just seems long to me, right? Um, I, I'm responsible for overseeing the whole thing. Um, but that being said, it's not a typo. Um, and it was, we followed up on it. Um, I have a status of where we are with every, every unit, every design. Um, so I'll, I'll need to do a wee bit of reflection on that. And, um, I myself thought that, then had that discussion, but it was Chris, he, he first told me I had it. Um, it seems long to me.
No, totally agree. That's what prompted it. And I appreciate the clarification. I just, you know, seeing what happens with document processing and AI and things that are being done, not just chat GPT, sucking up a bunch of Google docs and having it reformatted with work having to be done further on. Doesn't take four years anymore. So I appreciate you noting that. I look forward to hearing it.
And I think we've heard a curriculum that our subcommittee, that some, some of the departments are moving at a much faster pace than others. So I think, you know, there's variability, but I agree that that seems long.
Yeah. If I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, sure.
We jumped back to one, but I had a follow up on seven A before we shifted back. And the point here is we're talking about And the point here is we're talking about enriching, supporting and inspiring teaching. We're just thinking about enriching and supporting elements of that goal. I don't see any work in here, feedback that improves sort of the ability of the teachers or is sort of a force multiplier or gives them enhanced ability to perform their tasks. So I would like to see how we close that loop, just sort of being explained in here with what we provide.
Just, can I just simplify, as an interpretation, like how you, technology is simplifying their, their job basically, or the teaching and learning, or?
Well, I mean, I would think that broadly speaking, being able to have that one-on-one close interaction with the student, interact is where the real value add comes. Versus technology and anything you can do to free up a teacher to be able to perform that task and perform that, you know, educational interaction with a student is benefit. So anything you can do to free them up from any sort of ministerial or other tasks or other things. What tools are we giving them to really change that balance directly where they can most be infected?
I think the teachers are saying that we've just given them more and more to do, but that's, I appreciate that, that sentiment. Question.
All right.
I am, yes.
Very good. Thank you. Any other feedback or thoughts as you read through it again? Send some emails into us.
What do you want to do as a process? Bring it back to the agenda and, I mean, that retreat?
I would bring it back to the retreat and that way also maybe it gives some time. We'd like to hear Amy's initial thoughts or views. That gives her some time.
Thank you.
Good. We'll move on quickly, Rich, right? Annual reports on donations.
So the district has received over a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars in donations and gifts from the community. Highlighting some of the, the key ones, the highest was Tokeni, it's just under fifty-four thousand dollars for a new playground. Athletics collected over fifty thousand dollars to support sports like football, golf, track, wrestling, softball, lacrosse, baseball and field hockey. And the CDSP donated four thousand dollars for an outside guest speaker. As always, we thank our community partners for their generous donations.
Questions?
Just a quick clarification, this came up in finance also. So those optional parent fees aren't considered gifts and that's kind of.
So those are like the voluntary fees are not considered gifts. They're, they're voluntary fees that go to support the specific sport.
So we're missing, like, that was outlined in, in other memo.
Board questions? Have we just, Sarah?
And I say this every year, but the, the, the football parent donation, while, while I'm grateful for that, the donation, it, the amount is staggering to me in comparison. And I think we have to bring up that equity question again. It does for me.
Well, this is why I brought it up, because there is talk about going to participate, volunteer participation fees. They have a zero volunteer participation fee versus lacrosse. So depending on, so depending on how you.
Just saying the discrepancy on this list when it says.
On this list, but when you look across all the sports that we did on Fri, on last Thursday, it's not as glaring.
And I just echo Rich's comments and thanking all those folks involved, CDSP, all the parents, booster clubs. The folks at any first corp for robotics, Kate Southwork on the artwork, and always the Darian Foundation and the Tokeni PTO, thank you. It's incredibly generous community that we're part of. So thank you for that. Good. Yes.
I just had a quick question.
Sure.
To understand, Rich, what does Turkey Bowl mean in the football parents donation?
So they donate funds for certain things, like sometimes it's like fog that the players run through and small like materials, things like that.
Thank you. Sorry. Flower.
That comes from. Exactly.
Good, good question. Thank you, Rich. We'll move on to discussion on the May twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three financial report, possible action on proposed budget transfers.
So this is the financial report through May. We are forecasting a positive balance of just under eight hundred thousand dollars. General education RC is a positive hundred and eleven thousand, and the special education RC is a positive six hundred and eighty-eight thousand, two hundred and nine. And just as a reminder, the majority of that is from excess cost reimbursement. Salaries forecast a positive thirty-one thousand, seven twenty-four. The bulk of that is from savings in clubs and councils and staff turnover. Operating is forecasted as a deficit of eighteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-four. That does highlight a projected deficit in legal fees of thirty thousand dollars, which are the potential transfers for tonight. And then some savings in tuition reimbursement, and then the adult ed cooperative that we have at the Stand for Public Schools. Fix shows positive eighty-two thousand, seven fifteen. That bulk is in health insurance, which is really census changes and dental claim savings, and then some utility savings as we are getting towards that time of the year where we start to disencumber some of our bills. And we've had a little bit warmer spring and summer than we normally have, and so we've saved some of there. Revenue is a positive seven hundred and three thousand dollars. As you can see, the bulk of that is excess cost related at a positive seven hundred and thirty-four thousand. Some other highlights are building and field rentals are down primarily in building rentals by about twenty-five thousand, ELP tuition down by thirty-one thousand. And we've gained additional consents for Medicaid revenue of almost fifteen thousand homes. There are two transfers for consideration and approval. The first is for fifteen thousand dollars in district legal fees. We are recommending taking the savings from electricity. The need is largely due to some non-renewal legal fees that we have. And then fifteen thousand dollars in special education legal fees, and the recommendation is to take the savings in health.
Good. Any questions? May I have a motion to approve the proposed May budget transfers? Dennis, second by John, all those in favor? That is unanimous. Katie, you with us? Good. I wasn't sure whether your screen was frozen. Thank you. Approaching the witching hour there. We'll move on to further discussion and possible action on proposed revisions to board of education policies. Forty-one, twenty-five evaluation, termination and non-renewal of athletic coaches, forty-one, seventy-five. Prohibition on recommendations for psychotropic drugs, forty-two, twenty-five minority staff recruitment, forty-two, fifty employee checks, forty-two, seventy-five family and medical leave. So I will turn that over to Marge. This is a, this is the second reading and review. So, Marge, Dave.
So correct, this is the second reading. I have not received any comments on these to date. Have you, Marge? So we received no comments.
Thank you. Any further, all right, good, thank you. May I have a motion to approve the proposed board policy revisions as presented? Dave Brown, second by Julie, all those in favor? That is unanimous. Katie, you with us on board policy? Great, thank you. I think there's a delay there, right? We'll move on to update master agenda, February through August, twenty twenty-three.
So this is just reflecting actuals, what we've done or what we are proposed to do between February that's, we passed and through this particular August. So probably looking ahead, the, you'll see in a schedule for the new calendar board meetings that we put in an extra meeting there. It doesn't show up here because it's, this is this year, right? So, but you can see, also see a little bit of potentially the discussion about for the board retreat, the types of things that will be on there. Self-evaluation, board of education goals, something that's not on here is probably Tom, it's on there, legal updates, board aberrations. So you can, you can sort of see some of the topics that are up for discussion. It looks like we're going to have to get a different date for the athletics, because C I A C, they can't make that date for the presentation. And we need them for the presentation. I think to have it without it wouldn't be helpful, but, but that, we still have a lot, we still have a lot to accomplish in the board goals. Sorry, in the board agenda. So anyway, there you can see sort of, it's just an update to the, the role in master calendar.
Could we add the C I A C to the July eighth meeting? Sorry.
Yes, I'll try for that. If, if, yeah, I can try for that, yes.
That would be.
And, oh, sorry, I didn't go, I didn't want to go on to the next one.
Yep, all right, that's fine. And then first reading and discussion on proposed schedule for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four regular board of education meetings.
Yeah, if you just take a wee look at that, I think the only other thing we added in was that June eighteenth meeting. And that's just simply for a one agenda passable item, which is hiring of potential employees.
Great.
We don't have budget control, do we?
No.
Not, you have been.
July twenty-fifth, update.
No.
Update enrollment and possible action on utilization of budget.
We do not have.
We don't have it. Good spot, thank you, Dexter.
Yeah, we. We'll have, I think the way it's written, we're not looking at the strategic plan, but we are.
So this is the first date you want to take a wee through a lot of them. We had, we go with looking at the proposed monthly meeting schedule for the committees. So that's particularly the, the chairs of the committees, if they would look at this and see, does it resonate with you a little bit? And there's some things we have to do, like the finances have to be done at a certain particular time to, to meet timeline of the meetings. But we'll have, we have a lot in practice a little bit. Here we can actually post all these now. The danger, if we post them all and we don't make one, we have to technically go through the cancellation process, right? Notification cancellation process. So the question, whether you want them all posted or not, I'll take that under advisement from the board.
Don't you post it as a tentative schedule until they're warned?
Yes, we can do that. Yeah.
You don't have to worry about canceling.
Yes, we can do that. Yes, we can do that. We could do that. We could, we said that, Nada, that's a good suggestion. That's a good idea.
Is that a new, is that a new practice we just instituted? That makes a lot of sense. How many years that?
For these many meetings.
Yeah, make it glaringly. I love it. The bigger posts. You can't get called out for canceling it.
Yep.
Love it.
Good. Good stuff. All right. Thank you. Marge, any updates on your end, hiring and resignations and all that good stuff?
Well, just to remind you that we are still looking for an assistant principal at the high school to replace Mr. Rivera. An assistant principal at the middle school because Dana Hutchins decided not to come back for her leave. And the assistant principal for special education at Royal. We have very few teacher openings now, but in this district, for some reason, they tend to happen later in the summer. So I'm not resting yet.
You feeling good about resume flow and?
So Carolyn and I screened twenty people last week, and we have interviews set up for next week. And Alan is beginning screening tomorrow.
Okay. All right. So as I said before, the beat goes on.
Yes, when do we get an enrollment update? When we figure out sections and that impacts, is that July? I'm sorry.
August.
The August meeting.
Okay, so that's, that's a first look at enrollment.
But because we don't, because we don't have budget control, it used to be that we had to vote to release those ones. So now we don't have to do that. So it can be a little later.
Well. Hiring or not, yeah, hiring purposes can't be that much later, right?
Yeah.
The update to us could be later. They can make the decision.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm just very interested in the other numbers.
Yeah, yeah.
We can give an update.
Well, that, okay, so August eighth is the official.
But also the meeting, it's also the July meeting we pushed out, so.
Yeah, so I guess.
Technically only have had one meeting.
Maybe, maybe we, do we have any ideas early as the retreat?
Yes. So as of right now, we're under the budgeted section. So as of right now, we're under the budgeted section.
Oh, we are, okay.
Do you know how many are close?
So we're two under budget and we have three that are, you know, within a few students.
Okay.
Good. Thank you, Rich. All right. Thank you, Marge. Michelle, we'll go to public comment.
Anyone in person? If anyone online would like to participate, please use your raised hand icon. There are no raised hands at this time.
Okay. I will make a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing upcoming contract negotiations. Pursuant to Connecticut general statute one, two hundred and sixty, may I have a motion, Julie, second by Dennis Maroney, all those in favor? That is unanimous. We'll move into executive session. Thank you.